Welcome to the City of Marshawn, City Hall at 10 West State Street for our regular meeting on a Monday night starting at 5:30. Today's date is November 26, 2018. Notice to the public, the mayor and council, welcome. Comment from the public during discussion of any of the agenda items, step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Limit your remarks to three minutes so that others may also speak. Please speak clearly, direct your comments to the mayor and city council, not to any specific consular directly. It's at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions or comments, or to have staff respond during the meeting. Would those who are able, please stand for the pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Lamer.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Weirin.
Here.
Cahill.
Here.
Gowdy.
Here.
Hoop.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Are there any comments that any of the consuls or city administrator would like to make at the start of the meeting?
I'm sure glad we missed it. The sixteen inches of snow.
Oh, okay. If nobody else has any remarks, I'd like a moment of silence for John Veltie, our partner. He died last Friday of lung cancer. Let's go on to item E, and that is yours of service being recognized. Do we have anyone prepared to do that? Oh, good.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Sarah Wasmblum, Library Director. It's my great honor tonight to have from the library Ellen Yowds. Ellen has, before she came to the library, Ellen worked for the school district for thirty-three years as a school librarian at Robert Hansen Palmer School, and then worked out of the Rogers School. As a school librarian, Ellen worked closely with the Public Libraries Youth Department and served thousands of children over those thirty-three years. And thankfully, the partnership that we built with all the school librarians, after Ellen retired, she, we were lucky enough for her to come to work for us five years ago as a part-time employee. Now Ellen, of all people, knows the importance of literacy in libraries and how they impact our next generation of community members. We've been very extremely fortunate to have her as a key staff member for these past five years. One of Ellen's great strengths is her work with kids and families. She knows so many of our regular library users. Kids come in and they're like, they take a double take when they see her, and she has the number of many of them, so that's also very helpful. She provides outstanding customer service at the Youth and Circulation Desk. She's always calm and caring with our library visitors. As many of you know, the library can be a bit of a crazy place with about 300,000 visitors a year, and remember, we are open seven days a week. I can always count on Ellen to be right there delivering great service to our community. So it's really my great pleasure that somebody like Ellen, who's given so much already to the community, has then stepped up and worked at the library, and she's just a joy to have there.
If I could just indulge for one moment, I also would like to recognize Sandy Gowdy
is in the audience, and Sandy retired this past year after thirty years of service to the library and ending as Assistant Director. I won't make her come up, I just want to thank Sandy for everything she did. And I would like lastly to thank Leah Maddox. Leah Maddox was the President of the Library Board of Trustees. She stepped down last month. She was President for two years and served longer on that. She's been an excellent President, provided outstanding leadership to the board, and helped me immensely in the day-to-day running of the library. And we're sad to see Leah go, but again, we have so many wonderful community members that give of their time, not just to the library, but so many organizations, and I want to thank them all.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a motion to approve the concerned agenda?
I move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Thank you. Carried. Madam Secretary, would you read the items on that agenda?
Approve the council minutes for November 12th. Approve the bill list in the amount of $1,910,961.46. Resolution authorizing a grant application for $100,000 to the Iowa Department of Natural Resources Urban Conservation Water Quality Initiative Grant for the parking lot renovation at Church and First Streets. Resolution approving a quote from Clearspan for tornado-related repairs to the Hoot Barns, and approve alcohol license renewals, BPOE Lodge, East Side Liquor and Grocery, Rumor Sports Bar, Seven Rayo's Liquor Store, Mama De Grados Pasta and Pizza, Iowa River Brewing Company, Ocean City Chinese Restaurant, Iverody's Last Salud, Quick Star 607, and Express Smart.
Thank you very much. Item G then is on to resolutions. Would you read the first one, please?
We have a public hearing on the sale of 213 East Main Street with a resolution authorizing this sale following the public hearing.
Is there a motion to approve that?
The public hearing.
Oh, it's a public hearing. I declare the public hearing is open now, and the time is 5:36. Have you received any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Are there any public comments?
Your Honor, may I?
Yes, you may.
The drawing that was included in the packet, I think, is incorrect. The subdivider is showing on Main Street that they would own the entire block, half a block, I should say, or quarter block. I've been made aware that their, Dave Gray owns, there's a building in between them and the vacant parking lot, and that that is not for sale, and it will stay there. So if you take that drawing and take that out, it changes that drawing a whole bunch. I'm a little concerned that they haven't, and they've been negotiating, so I'm concerned that they haven't updated this so we know exactly what we're getting into. And I'd like to make one other comment, and that is that I have talked to a couple realtors. There's been, in early September, there was a sale of a vacant lot on Main Street. That sale was at $3.40 a square foot. I'm thinking if private people can get $3.40 a square foot, why can't the city, rather than a dollar, for a major parking lot that the Orpheum, the College, and the other businesses right around there use, since there isn't any more parking lot for them? So I would suggest that we think about that sale at a dollar might be a little cheap. Finally, if, I don't want us to be giving one of the subdividers an advantage over somebody else, because if you would think about the one that Conlon has proposed out there by Walmart, I'm sure he had to pay 10,000 or 15,000 an acre for that, and if he can put $100,000 into his proposal and still be in the running for getting it, I think $20,000 or $30,000 for our parking lot isn't asking too much. That's all I had to say, sir. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I would second what he said about the pricing of that lot.
Other comments? If not, let's go to staff review.
Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. I don't know that I have a whole lot of additional comments. I know that Mr. Sweeney is here from Coinesry if you have any specific questions about the proposal or conditions. I don't know that I have anything specifically to add unless there's questions.
Could we see an updated map, what it really is going to look like? Do you have an updated map?
My understanding is that that would be the proposal that's submitted at this time, so we don't have anything in addition to that. As you mentioned, negotiations are...
It's over. The building is not for sale, so he will not buy that building.
Can you explain what building we're talking about? I'm not sure.
Just east of the old, what was it?
Iowa wholesale.
Iowa wholesale. Just east of there, there's another building in there before you get to the parking lot, a fairly good-sized building.
That held Jake's Game Room and some other facilities. Is that the building we're talking about?
Anyway, that building is not for sale and will stay there. So the drawing that we have here is not in compliance with what they, what the property that they can get. So I think we need to redo that drawing and make sure we got it right before we, whatever.
One point that I would advise is that, you know, there is a situation here where clearly there's another property owner involved that the, the Coinesry has to work with. Ultimately, those are, those are things that have to be shaken out with their application to the Iowa Finance Authority as well. By making this commitment with the, with the offer to buy, it doesn't mean that property transfers right away or anything. They have to get the tax credits before we would proceed. And so that's just another contingency, just as though another contingency which we could add into the purchase agreement or the offer to buy as well, would be that they have to acquire that property in order for us to sell ours, if that would be something that you would like to do. So, I mean, there's, there's other things that you can do where, you know, we don't want to put ourselves in the middle of a real estate transaction, however, we don't want to nullify their application to the Iowa Finance Authority either.
No, but I think it needs to be right. It needs to be, if they're going to make a submittal, it should be right, and if the building is not for sale, it should...
They're showing a concept, so a lot of what we've seen that's come forward are concepts, because there's really not any property changing hands until the tax credits are awarded. And so that's where I would say, what's been presented before you is a concept, ultimately, that if, I would just guess, and I would ask Mr. Sweeney to verify, if they can't get that property, then their project is probably not going to happen. So...
Okay. They do have to, as part of the January application submission to the Iowa Finance Authority, it is my understanding that they have to have a site control in order to submit. So as Jessica mentioned, those are things that have to be worked out. Clearly, if they're not able to be worked out as proposed, I'm sure that it impacts the application submission.
If there are no other council or public comments, let's declare the public hearing is closed at 5:43. Let's go to item number two.
I move for approval, Your Honor.
I'm sorry. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
No.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
No.
Martin.
No.
Motion carried. For three.
Thank you. Then, after you've checked who voted how, please go to item number two.
We have a public hearing on an agreement with the MCBD with a resolution approving the agreement following.
And let's declare that public hearing open at 5:44 PM. Has the clerk received any written comments?
I have not.
Are there any public comments? Let's go to, there is, sure, come on up.
Nate McCormick, 1904 Bailey Drive, and President of the Marshawn Central Business District. Just wanted to very, very briefly express our thanks for the support that the city and the city council has provided to the Central Business District over the years. As many of you know, we've worked hand-in-hand with the city in many, many projects in the downtown, but obviously with the tornado significantly, and the efforts for recovery, rebuilding, and revitalization of the downtown. So I just wanted to give the council the opportunity to ask me any questions that you have, and like I said, say thank you for that previous support. We are working very closely with both the resources at Main Street at the state of Iowa level, and also with partners at the federal and city levels, including our city staff here, to make sure that our downtown is being supported in every way possible during the recovery, and making sure that we have all the resources that we can put towards that recovery available, and that our downtown business and building owners know that those resources are available, and helping them kind of navigate the challenges associated with finding and executing those projects. So I just want to make myself available for any questions, mostly.
Anybody have any questions for Nate? If not, your alley still looks nice, and thanks for volunteering.
Absolutely.
Does any staff wish to review?
I'll just comment that this is an agreement to, for next fiscal year, which would be starting July 1 of 2019, not to be confused with the funding that was provided in this fiscal year, as sort of the regular allocation of $26,000, as well as then the additional 40 that was provided after the tornado. So this is for a completely different fiscal year.
Can you please share with me where it states the amount that we're looking at? I'm not seeing it on the agreement.
It is $30,000.
Was it 30? That's what I thought we had discussed before, but I guess I didn't see that in the agreement, and just wanted to verify that that was, it was 26 last year, and we're looking at 30,000 this year. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Any other staff comment or council questions? Let's declare the public hearing closed at 5:47, and I'd entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I move for approval.
I'll second, please.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Thank you. Let's go on to resolution number three. Would you read that item, please?
Resolution approving a contribution of $6,780 to the 13th Street District for security cameras.
And let's declare the, oh no, that's the calls for resolution. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Tie goes to the youngster, Isom, and any further comments about this?
May I ask what part of the funding stream does this money come from? Is it out of our general funds, out of the sales tax? Where does it come from?
It is coming out of the council-designated portion of local option sales tax, which you had not designated previously in this fiscal year.
And is this a one-time, one-time fee, or one-time cost?
This is a one-time cost, although I would assume if they had future proposals to expand the system, that those could come forward.
Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Gary Thompson, 601 East Main. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't know, are we setting a precedent on this? I think this is the first one to come before you, that we're going to fund in a ratio of three to one with the businesses doing this. You know, if they're given 2,500 from, you know, the 10 businesses in that area, and we're matching, you know, basically 73%, it's almost a three-to-one ratio, is this a precedent we're going to set and hold for all future cameras in town? I know this is something that Joe and I both talked about during the campaign, that it's very important, but I just want to make sure that what we do here tonight is something we can continue to do in the future. I mean, I support this, but I just want to make sure that we're on the right page here moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Ready for the roll call?
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Very good. Carried, thank you. Would you read item number four, Madam Clerk?
Resolution approving amendment to the comprehensive plan of 2030 for two parcels from low-density residential to mixed-use.
Let me call for a motion to approve first.
Move for approval.
Second.
Now, let's have some discussion about it.
Okay. Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. This area, we've talked about this area a little bit in past meetings. Our comprehensive plan is a citywide plan that we put in place a few years ago, and the idea is it's a 20-year vision, and so we know that things aren't always going to be exactly as we outlined at that time. This is one of those areas. Back when the comprehensive plan was completed, we really didn't have any immediate kind of thoughts or interest or foresight into specifically kind of this area, and so it was all grouped together in the low-density residential category. And so in light of the conversations for proposed development that we've been having, we think that it would be more appropriate to amend the plan to put this into a mixed-use category. And so the Planning Commission at some of their previous meetings has discussed this. They made a recommendation for approval that that change be made as we prepare for rezoning application before you, further down on this agenda, to go to a traditional neighborhood. We thought the mixed-use designation would be appropriate to allow for both combinations of residential or commercial development that may occur. Looking at this area, kind of defined in blue there on the screen, that square, basically a section block, almost 40 acres, of what was previously Hibbs Property, now Stalzer Farms Incorporated.
Very good, thank you. Any questions? Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Very good. Carried, and would you read the next item, the next resolution, please?
Resolution approving the fiscal year 18 annual financial report.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Diana?
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. This report summarizes our revenue and expenditures for fiscal year 2018. It also shows the amended budget that was updated in May. This is a cash basis report. The audit report, or CAFR, that we'll bring to you in December or January is accrual base basis. The reason we use cash basis is because that's how we budget, so we want to match the budget with actual. This report is due to the state auditor by December 1st. So to kind of go over it with you, do I have control? Yes, I do. The first page is a summary, and the pages 2 through 10 provide more detail by fund and function. The governmental column here is comprised of the general fund, special revenue fund, TIF, debt service, and capital projects. The second column, the proprietary column, is comprised of Marshalltown Water Works, the sewer and stormwater, compost, transit, and the aquatic center concessions. They're considered a business. The top third of the page is our revenues. Most of these are self-explanatory, but down here under miscellaneous, this line includes donations, fines, and sale of merchandise, and reimbursements. The other financing sources row includes sale of capital assets, proceeds from long-term debt, and transfers in. You'll remember in fiscal year 18 that we issued bonds for the police and fire building for about $12.8 million, and then Marshalltown Water Works also issued debt of about $716,000. So overall, we had budgeted $67.6 million, and we came in at $68.3 million, so slightly higher, which is good. This section includes expenditures. If you want to know what's included in these particular functions, you can look on page six, and it will tell you what is made up. For example, public safety is police and fire. Overall, in this section, we budgeted $41.4 million, and we came in at $35.3 million. Next is the business-type activities. Again, these are the proprietary ones. This also came in under budget. We budgeted $14.7, ended at $13.8. So overall, we had budgeted a deficit of $615,000, and we came in at $6.5 million above. So if you add up our cash balances, which includes our ending fund balance of $47.7 million, and then we also add in our internal service funds, which is our health insurance and workers' comp with 2.5, and then our negative $11,000 for private purpose funds, it comes to $50,193,570. The last section summarizes our debt. It totals $59.5 million. If you want to see more detail, you can look on page 10. I'll go down to page 10. So on page 10, you also have the salaries and wages. This is the gross wages for city staff and also Marshalltown Water Works, almost over $12 million. And then you have the debt. So it lists it by purpose, what it was coming in at the beginning of the fiscal year, what we issued. There's the police and fire building, 12.7. What was retired, what we paid off, and the outstanding balances, and how much interest was paid during the year. So down here is the debt limitation for general obligation bonds, which is at $72 million, which we are way under. So we're fine there. And then this part seven is the cash and investment assets. This I did change by $1, so the ending total would come up, ending in $570, just like it is on page one. This does not affect what will be published in the paper tomorrow. That will still be correct. Do you have any questions? Just overall, you know, we, when we budget, we want to come in, actual wants to come in under budget, which we did. Any questions?
It may be snowing, but the sky isn't falling, right?
Right.
If there aren't any other questions, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Isom.
Yes.
Lamer.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Weirin.
Yes.
Cahill.
Yes.
Gowdy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Carried, and thank you, Diana, for the good work you do in that department. Madam Clerk, would you read the next item, please?
Resolution approving the annual urban renewal report.
I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Okay, the first page of this report is going to tell you what happened during the fiscal year. So with all the TIF districts, we started with a cash balance of $937,000. We had $200,000 in revenue, and we had $636,000 in expenses, so our ending cash for all districts is half a million dollars. So if you go to page two, this itemizes it out by TIF district. So this first one is the retail district, which is the south side of town. So this is the cash for that. We started out with $25,000. We had TIF revenue of $119,000. We had interest of $1,000. Our rebate, so $51,000, went to Tyson's at around 40,000. Our rebates of $51,000 went to Tyson's at around $45,000, and Plum Supply around $6,000. And the non-rebate expenditures include medic of $55,000 in our bond payments. So, this particular TIF district ended with a $17,000 cash balance. And these other pages are just kind of a history of what's happened, who we have rebate agreements with, who we did have rebate agreements with, and our bonds. So, now we'll go to page...
Can I ask a question, please, Diana?
Sure.
Is there a certain threshold that you should have as a cash balance? Is there any formula or any percentage that you need to keep as a cash balance at the end of a year?
No, there's none required, but you want it, ideally, you would want it close to zero. Because on the next topic on the agenda item, we're going to certify what we want the county to collect. And so, what we pay, what we collect and what we pay out should be fairly close.
Thank you.
Oops. It's going too fast. So, then, next district, we're on to here, the east side. East side TIF district. Started out with $104,000 cash balance, collected $65,000 in TIF revenue, and $1,200 in interest. Our rebates here went to Menards on 18th Avenue. And then, this is $57,000 for bond payments and legal fees. So, we ended almost with $50,000 there. Next page is page 18 of the report. This is for our Uptown area. We started out with $107,000, TIF revenue of $5585. Special interests, special revenue interest, $7,800. Our non-rebate expenditures of $378,000. Went to the central business district, bond payments, facade payments, Coliseum Study, and sidewalks. And the last TIF area is the Marshalltown Eagle View at Wondering Creek. So, we didn't start with any cash at all. The only expenditures we had was about $8,600 in legal fees. So, that is what makes up the report, with all the extra detail that you'd ever want to know. Do you have any questions?
Okay. I guess I should call for public comment, if there is any. And if not, seeing nobody showing a hand, let's call a roll.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Carrie, and on to item number 7, please.
Resolution authorizing certification of code of Iowa tax increment financing indebtedness to the county auditor for each urban renewal area.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Well, let's go with Weren on the second for that tie. Discussion.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. Okay, this is an annual report that we need to do and provide to the county, which they will certify and collect property tax revenues. So, we have, again, four different districts. So, we're going to start out with the east side. We're not certifying anything new this year. And then, we're going to expect to pay out the Menards rebate, $94,000, and then our bond payments of $78,000. So, the total requested is $172,000. So, that's pretty typical of prior years. New this year is we are going to decertify some debt. So, in prior years, we came up with these projects. Some of them came in lower than what we expected. So, now, we need to decertify so we can get reconciled to the county. The auditors wanted us to do that. Any questions on this particular one, on the east side TIF? If not, we'll move on to the south side TIF. We are going to certify a million dollars, and that's coming from the Holiday Inn Express, which you approved prior. So, payments in this district, we'll be paying Tyson's rebate of $51,000. We'll be paying out for our bonds. And Bobcat Academy, which is new this year, $14,000. And then, Marshall Gam Hawkeye Hotels for $57,000. So, our total requested is $155,000. Again, we are decertifying some projects as listed. Any questions on this one? We'll go to the Uptown. This $30,000 is from the central business district, which you just approved in the meeting prior. So, we'll be paying out for bonds, central business district for $30,000, and the 2011 bonds. So, total requested here is $284,000. There's quite a bit to decertify here, so I won't read them all. Do you have any questions? If not, we'll go on to the last one, TIF district number 5. We are not certifying anything new. Last year, we certified $1.3 million to Red Earth Real Estate Holdings. So, for 2020, we expect to pay them about $24,000. Total requested is going to be $42,000, because 41.79% will come back to the city. So, the county will collect 42. We will pay Red Earth 24, and we'll get to keep 17.5. Any questions on this? Good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any public comment? Roll call, please.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Carrie, very good. Let's go on to item number 8.
And item number 8 consists of seven change orders. If you would like me to read them all so they can be approved in one motion, or would you like to approve them individually?
I'd sure, you know, there's a tip-off tonight, 7 o'clock. I'd just sure like to read them all together, if it's legal.
It is legal.
Counselor?
We've done it before. We could do it.
Let's do it.
I move to approve all of the change orders.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Discussion.
Good evening, Justin Nickel, Public Works Director. As the city clerk read, I believe we do have, what, seven or eight, or seven different resolutions making changes. As I've discussed before, with our bid packages spread out amongst the 15 or 16 different contractors, it ends up with multiple changes coming back as one resolution for a change. Be happy to answer any specific questions about any of these, or be happy to walk through anything with any questions that may be had.
Justin, I realize that these types of items are, go with the territory. I don't like them, but it is part of that. Where do we stand on our ending budget with regard to the bonding, bonded amount?
I don't have the exact numbers in front of me. Using just a rough rule of thumb that an engineer and architect would use for any building, I would still tell you that we are well within the tolerance. A rule of thumb might be that 3% of the total contract amount might come back as a, as change orders. Using ours, that would be somewhere in the order of $400,000, $500,000. I certainly could add up and get you a total with a little bit of help from finance, but the summary that Story sent, this total, these nine changes totaled to $47,000, so roughly 10% of that estimated. In my assessment, and I'm sure Story would agree, we're still well within tolerance for the amount of change orders that we've had.
Okay. Thank you. I see this, I can see from up here the story representative nodding his head affirmatively.
If he disagreed, we'd have to have a conversation.
Right.
And it'd probably be me apologizing.
Any other questions or comments? Public comment? Roll call, please.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Very good. Carried unanimously. On to item H, which is ordinances. Oh, I'm sorry, Miss Nine. Let's go to number nine instead.
Resolution approving an engineering services agreement with Fox Engineering for the First Street parking lot improvements.
Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
This is, I'll bring you back around to the history on this one. This is with the Manhole Lampole project. We also applied for sponsored project dollars through Iowa Finance Authority, and were awarded $290,000. And so, that would fund part of this project. As part of our bonding conversation earlier, well, just a few months ago, there was a vote to include $500,000 towards this project as well. The final piece is the $100,000 grant application that you approved earlier tonight on the consent agenda, which we did apply for last year, and were not successful, but we're also sort of not as far along in our planning process on this. This entire time, and with the Manhole Lampole project, we've been working with Fox Engineering. Fox Engineering is the one who put together sponsored project application, the water quality grant application, and has done some initial work. And so, this would be formalizing our agreement with them for continuing those design services, as well as construction oversight services as part of construction of the project.
Any questions or further discussion?
What's the timing of this project?
I don't, we haven't really started on the Manhole Lampole one, which this is all kind of tied into that bar wing. And so, there's some contingencies. I don't know if Steve Sapier with Fox, if you would like to talk a little bit about the timeline?
Steve Sapier, Fox Engineering, in Ames. Yeah, the Manhole Lampole project will be bid out very soon. We actually just discussed that with Justin recently. We're waiting on a few easements. I think we have two left of the 14 total that we needed to get. So, that's going to be bid out soon. So, that project will finish up in the spring of 2020. And it's also anticipated that this project would start construction in that, in that spring as well, and finish in that summer.
Thank you. Any other consular questions? Public comment? Roll call, please.
Cahill?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Carrie, and now to item H, ordinances. The first one of which, would you read?
We have a public hearing, followed by the first reading of an ordinance approving a rezoning of approximately 34.7 acres from low-density residential R2 to traditional neighborhood.
I'll declare the public hearing open at 6:14 PM. Did the clerk receive any written comments?
I have not.
Are there any public comments? Staff review?
Michelle Spanheimer, Housing Community Development Director. As I referenced earlier, this is an area directly east of Walmart that we discussed. Property looking to rezone. Commission has had a couple of discussions about the area, and recommendation is to go to a traditional neighborhood zoning classification, which again allows for a mixed-use activity, both residential or commercial. We're proposing the entire section be rezoned at this time, even though the proposed project that's in before us is really on a smaller portion of about six, not quite six acres or so. But we look to take everything to rezoning, to allow for future development to occur, and be positioned in a, in a way that we can accept that a lot easier as it comes forward. So, we take that area going from La France up to Hibbs, and then east to basically the section line, approximately where, south of the hospice house. So, taking that to traditional neighborhood. And as I mentioned, this would be the first reading. In light of the fact that this is part of the application pending for the Iowa Finance Authority, certainly if the council would give consideration for waiving of second or third readings, that's why we wanted to hold the public hearing at the first, first reading session.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I would entertain a motion to waive the other readings, if anyone... Oh, I'm sorry, we have to close the hearing first. I declare the public hearing is closed at 6:17. And now, I would entertain a motion to either approve the ordinance or to waive the other readings.
I move for approval and to waive the second, third readings, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can I ask if the, the city's responsibility will be to complete the infrastructure of Merle Hibbs Boulevard and La France? And how far would that go?
So, Merle Hibbs is kind of a different situation. It's one that we've internally had some conversations about. One of the projects, you'll recall, that's happening very close to the hospice houses, the addition of 30 duplex units, which puts a lot of extra stress and pressure on Plaza Heights Road. And so, we've been having some conversations there about trying to fit that into our street plan for 2019 to extend Merle Hibbs. We would, we would look to do the same thing with La France at the same time. There's probably also some visioning, other planning that needs to be done to figure out how you potentially start to make some connections in there, and really start to put that area on track for future public infrastructure projects.
So, at this time, do we only vision them going to the end of this property, or to the end of this zone that we are looking at tonight?
Yes, yes and no.
And no.
It's probably a bigger question about how much other development could happen there in a quick timeframe. But yes, at least to the property line there with the property.
So, what I'm hearing you say is that we are, we do not have vision right now to take it all the way to 18th or to 12th, I'm sorry, to Governor Road at this point.
No, there's a, I think there's some creeks that run through there.
Right. Yeah, there's definitely some topography things that would have to be worked out. And typically, as we see development occur, we usually see that infrastructure kind of map with that as that goes. So, I would anticipate we'd see phases of things, for sure, as we see development. Probably the most immediate one would be the one associated with this project, if awarded, of the extension of La France to provide access onto that property. And as Jessica mentioned, the Hibbs one, too, knowing that we have development occurring up there, and how we might want to connect that in the near future.
Thank you.
This was vetted by planning and zoning?
Yes. Yes, they recommend approval.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am?
Anna Walters, 213 Thomas Drive. Just a question from a teacher perspective. You add a lot of housing in that. Is Hoagland built to flux in more students? Or does that become a central zone? It's not really a central zone, but as far as classroom sizes and numbers and kids going to school in their actual home neighborhood school. I don't know how many of them with a mixed use would have younger kids, but just something to think about with that close proximity anyways to Hoagland.
Thank you. Other public comment? Thank you. Other public comment? Ready for the roll call?
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lamer?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Weren?
Yes.
Cahill?
Yes.
Carrie, too. It's great to see our housing stock increasing in town. We are now at the discussion phase of the meeting and call for public comment. And again, people may make their comments on any item not on the agenda tonight. Approach the mic, give your name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes unless I authorize longer. Direct your comments to the mayor and council as a whole. Mayor and consellers shall not engage in discussion or, on or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on the items because they were not published in the agenda. Is there any public discussion or comment? If not, there's a good shot we're going to be able to watch that 7:00 tip-off. Okay. Declare our meeting is adjourned at 6:22 PM. Thanks for coming.